A public hearing on Comcast cable television franchise renewal. The date is May 2, 2019. Good afternoon. I am Christopher Clark, the Town Administrator for the Town of Harwich. Welcome to the Town of Harwich Cable License Renewal Public Hearing, which is part of the town's process to ascertain cable-related needs. With me today is the town's Cable Council, Bill August. And Bill and I have worked in the past together on some of these. The Board of Selectmen is the cable-licensing issuing authority pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 166A. The selectmen have designated me as the hearing officer and delegated the holding of this cable renewal hearing to me. Under this delegation, I can gather information. However, only the Board of Selectmen can make final licensing decisions. Notice of this hearing was in the local paper for two successive weeks. Copies of the legal advertisement are hereby entered into the record as ascertainment hearings, Exhibit 1 and 2. I do want to, and I know this is painfully boring, I apologize, but I do want to read the notice, just so it is officially into the record, as well as an exhibit. Legal notice: Town of Harwich, Cable Television License Renewal proceeding. The Town of Harwich Board of Selectmen is Cable Television Licensing Authority under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 166A, Section 1, and/or its designated cable advisory committee will hold a cable television license renewal, public ascertainment hearing in the Griffin Room, Town Hall, 732 Main Street, Harwich, Mass., on May 2, 2019, at 2:00 p.m. As part of the town's cable Comcast, cable television license renewal process, the Comcast license is due to expire August 1, 2021, and the Federal Cable Act 47 U.S. Code 546 requires a public proceeding to ascertain the community's cable-related needs and interests as part of the license renewal process. Public comment is invited regarding the town's license renewal needs and interests. And for further information and copies of the renewal records available for public inspection, you can contact the Town Administrator's Office at Town Hall. If and when Comcast files a license renewal application, a copy shall be available for public inspection at the Office of the Town Clerk by order of the Board of Selectmen as license issuing authority. Let me see. So just, we will receive comments and testimony about the cable-related needs. Interests are important to the public about how Comcast has proceeded, have performed under its existing license. Member of the public, Comcast, and other entities may have questions or submit comments. We also note that as part of the hearing, we want to hear all about cable-related matters of interest to the public, including, but not limited to, customer service, license administration, Comcast commitment to community programming and public education and government access, and to maintaining support for and possibly expanding the town's institutional network, which is crucial for town video originations. Any questions to Comcast should be directed through myself as hearing officer, and I will rule whether they are in order. Please keep your comments to no longer than five minutes. The process of ascertainment of the community cable needs and interests will remain open until further notice. Before hearing from the public, let's first welcome and hear from Comcast representative, who is Michael Gala. Is that the way you pronounce your name? Thank you. For introductory comments. Thank you. Mr. Gala?
Is this on? Do I have to turn it on?
It is. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you for having me here today. Obviously, this is your ascertainment hearing to obtain the needs of the community via public programming and what they're looking for in the next renewal license. Looking forward to working with Mr. Clark and Bill and whoever else appoints to sit on the committee to negotiate the new license. It will be me. Again, Mike Gala, I'm the Senior Government Affairs Manager that covers Harwich. I do the whole Cape. The whole Cape is my territory, plus the South Shore, some of the South Coast, and I get the vineyard in Nantucket. And my sole responsibility, for the most part, is to work with towns and schools on, obviously, license renewals, our Internet Essentials Program, which is our $9.95 a month internet program that we offer to low-income families and to those that have children on the National School Lunch Program. Those are the two main issues, along with any other stuff that's related to Comcast that comes up via the town and selectmen and anything else in the community that I'm tasked to deal with. So, looking forward to working with all of you. I'm here as an observer today, more than anything, to, this is your hearing, and I'm just here to observe, take into consideration what everybody says, and we'll work through the town to hopefully get a new license negotiated and move forward for the next 10 years.
Excellent. Thank you very much. I just wanted to acknowledge Jamie Goodwin is the station manager, and will be assisting in terms of the negotiations. So, most likely, it will be the three of us, Bill, myself, and Jamie, on behalf of the town. So, I have received some letters in advance of this hearing, so maybe I'll go through and we could just list these as exhibits.
Yeah.
So, we'll do this first, and then I will open it up for public comment.
Also, we could enter the legal advertisement as Exhibit 1.
Yes. I have that in my notes, that the legal exhibit is already added as Exhibit 1.
Okay.
So, the first one I have, and this is just in the order of the pile, Emily Mitchell, the Director of Harwich Council on Aging. Is Emily here today? Okay. So, Emily, do you want to paraphrase your letter, or are you okay with?
I'm happy to go either way.
Why don't you paraphrase? And then we do have officially, and I'm going to acknowledge this as Exhibit 2.
Good afternoon. Again, my name is Emily Mitchell. I'm the Council on Aging Director here in Harwich. I'm also a resident of Harwich. I am very lucky to serve a fabulous group of people here in town, namely, our older adults. Harwich and Cape as a whole are very interesting and unique locations. Here in Harwich, older adults, age 60 and older, who I serve, per statute, make up 53 percent of the Town of Harwich. And of folks age 60 and older, folks at the high, older end of that spectrum, folks 85 and older, are the fastest-growing segment of older adults in our community. We have good ways of advertising to them. I put out a bi-monthly newsletter. We put things on our website. But other avenues of advertising, such as social media, aren't always as effective with this group of people. For that reason, access to Channel 18 is an invaluable resource to us. I'm able to go on Channel 18 at least once a month, often more frequently than that. I can give updates on our new programming, upcoming big events, on our transportation services, access to our social services coordinator, access to information on housing, grocery shopping, you name it. I can get up on Channel 18 and tell people about it. And invariably, the day after it airs, I have folks coming into my office and telling me, "Hey, I saw you on TV. I'm so thankful I saw you, and I'm really happy to hear about this service." How do I sign up? How do I get involved? I'm really appreciative of that opportunity. So, I am endlessly thankful to Jamie Goodwin of Channel 18 and for the existence of Channel 18 to be able to communicate with folks so regularly in our community to share that information.
Excellent.
Any questions for me on that?
I think what we'll do at this point is just take, and I want to make sure we document, so we'll have your verbal comments as well as your written comments, and we will create a record for people to be able to review at the conclusion. So, just officially, your public comments, as well as your written comments, will be taken into account.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you for your attendance. The next exhibit I have would be Exhibit 3, and this is from Christina Joyce, Chair of the Harwich Voter Information Committee. I know Christine's here with us, so if you want to come up, and we'll do the same thing, paraphrase, and, or you're welcome to read your letters, too. Don't have me encourage you just to paraphrase if you want.
Christina Joyce, Chair, Voter Information Committee. Our task is to get voters' information, to keep them informed, especially as we run up to the town meeting and the local election. We rely greatly on Channel 18 to tape our programs to, and we've done a number of them running up now to next week. Typical is a review of our official positions on a number of the warrant articles. And also, coming up on the 14th of this month, after Town Committee, we're going to have a League of Women Voter Forum for the candidates that are running opposed, those running for selectmen, and those running for the one-year term in school board. So, this is, you know, we're big fans of Channel 18, and we think the community is too, because they can watch the taped program, get to know the candidates, get to know more about the articles. And at other times during the year, we help the Board of Selectmen with a program to recruit members, potential members, for various town committees. So, big fans. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
So, the same, that we'll accept the verbal comments, as well as the written testimony as Exhibit 3. Barbara Ann Foley, is Barbara Ann here today? So, Barbara Ann used to be the Director of Council on Aging. She did send a letter. I'm not going to read the entirety, but it will be in the record. It was dated April 8, 2019. To whom it may concern, Barbara Ann Foley of 30 Earl Road in West Harwich, and that would be identified as Exhibit 4. Miriam Reese, is Miriam here tonight, or this afternoon? So, Miriam's comments would be identified as Exhibits?
Exhibit 5.
Exhibit 5. So, Miriam submitted her comments as of April 16, 2019, one page. Lee Culver, the Emergency Management Director, is Lee here? So, Lee's comments will be identified as Exhibit 6 and included in the record. Exhibit 7 would be Jack Brown. Is Jack Brown here? I saw Jack earlier today, but, so his comments were sent as of April 26, 2019. I am going to, we did receive some material on the survey that was sent out. I think I'm going to wait till the end to do the survey. I want to make sure we give people opportunity to be able to get comments in. Those were the written comments that I have received prior to this hearing. At this point, I would like to open it up to individual comments, so if you would raise your hand, and if there's any departments that need to go back to work, I'd be happy to. No offense. I'll get to you next. So, Eric, why don't you go first, please?
Yeah, Eric Beebe, I'm the Recreation Director. I'm actually a resident of Yarmouth, but I work here in town. I just, I didn't write a letter, but I wanted to put my two cents in. Channel 18 has been a vital part of what we do for the Recreation Department. We run youth programs, we run the beaches in the summer, the parks, the fields. I often go on Channel 18 to talk about our programs, promote our programming. It's one of our main sources of advertising. It's also great for beach prep, all policies, sticker sales, closings, rainouts, everything we do. It's a great source to have to get the word out. Also, projects. We do a lot of projects through the Rec Department and Commission on our fields, parks, and beaches. It's a great way to get out and inform people of exactly what we're doing and why we're doing it. So, that, you know, it, to us, it's very important to us, aside from putting out brochures and sending our stuff to the schools, being able to go on there and get it out to the public is a great resource for us. And I look forward to being on people's TV screens for years to come. Hopefully, I'll get discovered soon enough, you know.
Just one question, just because I know White House Field.
Yep.
Can you comment a little bit about White House Field and what existing facilities may be there and what facilities may be desired to be there?
Yeah. White House Field, it's one of the most popular fields on Cape Cod for the Cape League especially. We have all different events there, but the Cape League uses it, the Harwich Mariners. We've done a lot of work there through CPC projects and through the Mariners' funding. We've done fencing, infield projects, irrigation projects. We're putting in a new scoreboard. We're looking to eventually, on a master list, put in new lights, new bleachers, extra batting cages, bigger press boxes, souvenir stands. So, it's always evolving at White House and trying to make the best viewer experience for spectators. And that's another one that I'll probably be going on Channel 18 in the months going ahead to kind of inform everybody what we're looking to do there, as well as other properties. Brooks Park has been a big one. So, we've got a lot going forward, and that's a big part of it.
And White House Field, just for the record again, that's a town-owned facility that the Mariners use, but also would other town agencies use that?
Yep. It's town-owned. It's under the jurisdiction of the Recreation Commission, so we book it. The Cape League uses it, the Mariners, as well as the high school varsity team, and then some private groups that also book it through the Rec Department.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Gentleman in the back?
My name is Al Rosenberg. I live at 62 Continental Drive, but receive my mail at P.O. Box 1593. We don't deliver to our street address.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I was one of a few members of the Channel 18 Committee, which was briefly in existence during the time of the previous station master. As Jamie could well tell you about, it was a committee which did not last as long as we hoped. But I stand here today to talk about, with a PEG system, the public access. And so, if I may briefly tell you about my experience with channel currently no longer what we called C3 TV in the old days, but Cape Cod Community Media Center. I'm a retired professor, and I found C3 TV over 20 years ago. And I think perhaps after I've said a few things, many people will now go over and use that channel, which is a wonderful, as is Channel 18, of course, but it's a wonderful thing to have, both for speech and democracy, as well as for doing the things that you'll hear about in just a minute. When I got there, there were a lot of free courses, and so you can take how to use cameras, how to make productions, how to edit. It's quite an amazing host of free courses that are available, and I took them all. I then produced and co-hosted over 115 shows called Cape Environmental Connections. And so, we had many of the staff from Cape Cod Commission, we had a couple of the superintendents from the National Seashore, and so many other people from the dump, whoops, sorry about that, the resale.
Transfer station.
We did talk about recycle in January. We talked about the issue of the Cape wind turbines. I took a camera over to that large radar dome on Military Base and filmed inside of that. And our standard thing after the hour interview show was, gee, well, it looks like we have more to talk about, but we've run out of time. After that, I began a half-an-hour series called Cape Connect. And various things were interesting in Harwich, which are still on the Internet. And if people are interested in any of these, you just go to YouTube and say Cape Connect, and then what you're looking for. And so, Cove Clubhouse, if you know that, in Harwich, where people with mental issues are able to find comfort during the day. We did a couple of programs on the Harwich Junior Theater as they tried to rebrand themselves to their new name. Painter Emily Jean, I met her on Cape Cod. I met her on Red River Beach. And I guess I'd recommend, oh, yes, Tile Works here in town, and many other things that I'm sure you've encountered yourself. They're on YouTube, thanks to the public access television. Thank you, Terry. But the one I'd recommend the most is Yak Arts, Cape Connect Yak Arts. And if you've ever seen those tens of thousands of amazing things, which you will see, thanks to camera work we're done. After that, let me mention a documentary that I was able to make at that station, and you could too, if you went to make a documentary. This was Building Tribal Earth Lodges. And if you go and just Google Building Tribal Earth Lodge, you'd find 100 images with about 11 minutes of documentary. It was over 50 years ago that I was a Director of an American Friends Service Committee Youth Work Camp. We helped tribal members on the Fort Berthold Reservation bring back an earth lodge, and it's a very interesting thing. Thousands of people have viewed it. It's on the Internet. And finally, I would just mention, oh, there's so many things you could, you can do over at Cape Cod Community Media Center. Finally, let me mention Cape Media Slam, Story Slam. And yes, I won a second prize in the trick-or-treat theme, and I did a few other talks, too. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next, I'll take the lady in red and then the lady in pink after.
Good afternoon. My name is Christine Menard. I am with the Family Pantry of Cape Cod. As I'm sure everyone will stand up here and attest to the fact that if it wasn't for Channel 18, Cape Cod Community Media Center, if we're spending money on advertising, we're not spending money on food. And these folks, not only do they have the pulse of the community, there is oftentimes the case when Kate or Jamie will call me and say, "Hey, I know you've got something going. We can carve out time for you." And I don't think there's a lot of commercial enterprises that, one, we couldn't afford it, but, two, that would be calling me, asking to get on the show. So, you know, we have things, not only do we go to talk about the events that are happening, but it's even more important for, there are 23,000 people on Cape Cod that are either worried about food, they're hungry now, or they've been hungry. And we serve almost 10,000 of those people. So, this is just a key part of our communication plan. So, if these types of stations go away, then there is a huge gap in the community that there is no commercial enterprise going to fill. So, I would just encourage everyone to keep that into consideration and realize that there are countless, countless social organizations out there that are relying on both Jamie and Kate's organizations, and the Family Pantry is certainly one of those. Thanks.
Very good. Thank you for your comments. Ma'am, and then you're next.
I'm Sedona Summer. I live at 15 Shady Drive here in Harwich, and I represent the Cape Cod Media Center for the things that they've done for me personally as an artist. First, Al Rosenberg is the one that introduced me to the Cape Cod Media Center and suggested that I could get an art show over there, which I did last year for two months. I displayed my artwork for the very first time in my life as a one-woman show. So, that was a great experience, plus I got a TV interview, and that was aired on Channel 99. And then, from there, I went on to be able, with the help of Terry and Jay Sheehan over at the Cape Cod Media Center, took my first book I wrote and turned it into an audiobook. Spending 10 hours in the studio, I created a two-hour book, being the narrator myself. So, that was a wonderful experience, and I've been able to share that book as an audiobook with people, local people here in town, that aren't good readers, that have definite need. These books that I've written are spiritual healing books, and they're inspiring and uplifting. And I have had to, had the ability through the, them listening to the audiobook, to heal themselves in some way and find themselves brought out of a depression that otherwise never, so far in years, had they been able to get themselves out of depression. So, these are helping our community, and with the help of Terry, getting me to be able to produce that, I've been able to share that with our community. The other thing Terry did for me was, we sat down and turned the audiobook into a three-minute video that I narrated and had pictures of my garden, and a beautiful graphic was created over there at the studio about what I vision as a free soul, someone unencumbered by damage done to them through their lives. And that aired even today on Channel 99, every couple of, a couple of days every week. And there's been great response from people seeing that and then wanting the book. Then the last thing, as a representative of the Guild of Harwich Artists here in town, Terry has agreed to come over to Art Week, May 4, and televise, as well as Channel 18 is going to have a representative there as well. And we're having the general public come into the cultural center and paint a square, a part of a mystery puzzle of a bigger painting that was created by Barbara Hagman here in town. And then, everybody's going to get an opportunity to paint a six-by-six square, and that's going to be built into a huge piece with 96 portions of those puzzles joined together, and that will be hanging at the Chamber of Commerce here in town for the summer. So, this is an ongoing event here at the Guild of Harwich Artists. We want to do a mystery puzzle, and Terry has agreed to advertise that for us so that next year will be even a greater success.
Excellent.
So, as an artist, I thank you all for helping me.
Thank you very much for your comments. Gentleman in the front row, and then the young lady in the polka dot will be next.
Steve Scannell, 836 Route 28, Harwich. My first show was on Nantucket waterfront type of stuff, where I was on a board many, many years ago, Shellfish and Harbor Advisory Board. So, I would put these meetings on the air. Fishermen hated me for doing that. None of the meetings were on the air until I brought the camera in, and I even delayed it for them, you know, it was like a personal favor. And lo and behold, you know, my first meeting on the SHAB board on Nantucket, they all tried to oust me. It was awful, you know, that I was going to bring the cameras in there. But the cameras, as we all know, you know, they hone you. They'll shape you up. If you know you're going to be on a camera, you're going to get your homework done so you don't look like an idiot. And when you do come to a meeting, it's going to be a lot less of the unprofessional talk. You know, it shapes things up. So, for boards and small committees, I highly recommend it. My dad, Robert V. Scannell, was a planner in Harwich, and that's what I like to do. I like to do planning. Of course, I'm an amateur. But Al, I was on your show. Me and Ally Strumsky were on your show. Hello, Al. And we talked about energy system planning, my monorail system that carries hydrogen, compressed air for the world, world-class system, never gets anywhere, and I think the main problem is this. There's really no cross-referencing with all these little programs in the Cape and Islands, and in Massachusetts, and in Rhode Island. Whereas if we had good cross-referencing, let's just say, for example, on the Blue Economy, if we had a Blue Economy channel, like for four hours a day, like Channel 98, it's underutilized airtime on that channel. There's a lot of reruns of this and that. But I think that's the direction we need to go in to get more bang for the buck from these little outfits here that have huge budgets, I think, but I don't even know what the budgets are, because I'm not, I don't get into the management. I've got enough to do, working on my fishery systems, eelgrass sewage systems, water systems. I love doing all that kind of work. I present it on a television show called The Scannell Agenda, which nobody watches, because there is no, well, I shouldn't say there is no reference for it in the newspaper, there isn't. And, you know, all these little TV stations don't have a centralized, good, let's say, index where you can go to for the next even three or four days or a week, just to find out what's going to be talked about, what programs are going to be up there. It's like if a businessman tried to do this, the stockholders would boot him right out of his job. But I don't know why these little stations get to do this. We have all kinds of programming, and there's no cross-referencing for what We have all kinds of programming, and there's no cross-referencing for what goes on, and there is no scheduling that a person on Cape Cod can easily go to. Maybe, you know, maybe you've got something for, to go online and get the schedule for a day or two for my program, but it's not like it's up there. So we need to really look at this business model because I think it's bad. It's a bad business model. It's an odd duck. It's quasi-public and private, and there seems to be no real hardball character cracking the whip. And that's a major problem. So the Cape and Islands Chambers of Commerce, I think, should step up and take the ball here and try to get something together. And we, the little people like me and my wife, and we got the producer of the year last year, thank you, Teri, and that was a wonderful honor because my wife has prayer and pizza. And then we both together, we have the little TV show called The Hyannis Honeymooners, which, again, nobody watches because you wouldn't even know it's in existence. And nobody surfs past with the clicker, Channel 99, 98. Now, years ago, when it was Channel 17, you had a chance that someone might just catch your show as they're clicking by on the lower channels. And that's another problem. I worked the camera for Talking Together, which is an excellent program. It's one of our most excellent programs, not like mine. It's really professionally done. These are three guys that really, really know their politics, and they deserve to be watched. They really do. But as far as volunteers being even paid a dollar per hour, you know, there's no dollar per hour for a volunteer cameraman, but maybe, maybe like a Chamber of Commerce could look into something like that and say, wait a minute, you have to get qualified to be a director or a cameraman. You just can't waltz in, take the course. And if you're not making the staff happy, if you can't operate on your own, that's a lot of money. So I think these operations could be remodeled and reformatted, and we could do things like combine the unemployment office, that's old terminology, like the dump, maybe, like the town dump, you know? To say the unemployment office could be combined with a TV station and/or radio station, et cetera. That might work. In a businessman's perspective in that world, you've got to have things that pay. So this cable license renewal is, to me, it just begs the question, don't we really need to reformat and rework and remodel all these types of programs which are neither here nor there? They're not private, they're not public. No one seems to be too bent out of shape when, let's say, we don't have scheduling that goes into the newspaper, and we complain about it. You know, a lot of people complain. But then there's some, there's some political avenue that you're supposed to go down, and there's some group that's going to, you know, talk to the State House for you. This has been going on for years. We still don't have scheduling. And I'd like just to know, you know, why we can't accomplish and have that accomplishment of just, you know, showing the public exactly what's going to be on the television.
I think we, you've made a lot of good points. I think we've captured those, and thank you very much for your comments. And then you'll be next. Okay, ma'am? Go ahead.
Emily Carter. I work at Brooks Free Library across the street, and I just wanted to say a couple words for the Cape Cod Community Media Center and Channel 18. As a library, what we do is disseminate information to the public, and both of these organizations have been instrumental in helping us achieve that goal. For the Cape Cod Community Media Center, they have given us the opportunity to make a PSA, to host classes that our patrons have given rave reviews to and come to so they can learn new skills. So it's a partnership that we are very much looking forward to growing and continuing to build as we go on. Channel 18 is a place that we go to on a regular basis to talk about our programming, to talk about new kits, things that wouldn't reach people who don't necessarily come into the library or who don't even think that we have other objects besides books in them. So I really can't stress enough how much both of these organizations have meant to us and will continue to mean to us in the future as we continue to build our social media presence and other avenues that we explore.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Ma'am?
Hi, my name is Kate McMahon, and I am the outreach director at Cape Cod Community Media Center. And what I would like to do today is I would like to submit a letter to you all. Should I give it to you right now?
I'll take it, yes. Unless you want to read from it and then present it. This would be identified as Exhibit 8.
And this letter is from David Alexander, and he's the school-to-careers and internship coordinator at Monomoy High School. And in this letter, he has shared how wonderful this first year working with us at the media center has been for an intern. And really, the reason that David cannot be here today is that we are hosting our first annual film festival at Monomoy High School this afternoon at 5:00. And what we've done with our intern is create this film festival, and we've involved many students and faculty, and we're really looking forward to having a successful night tonight and going forward.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So again, just as a note, the verbal comments and then as well as Exhibit 8 will be read into the record.
Do you have a copy, an additional one that I could take, by the way? Thanks.
I'll go, Mike Lach.
Thank you very much.
And then you're next.
I'm Michael Locke, Executive Director of the Harwich Conservation Trust. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak and provide this enthusiastic letter of support for Town of Harwich, Channel 18, and the Cape Cod Community Media Center, Channel 99, and additional local access channels. As a local nonprofit with land preservation, land stewardship, and educational programs that have town-wide as well as regional benefits, Harwich Conservation Trust, thanks to local cable access, has been able to inform and educate viewers on a range of topics, whether it be land preservation projects that help benefit the public either in-town or across town borders when we're preserving land that protects the public drinking water supply, educate viewers about our land stewardship projects, including innovative ecological restoration efforts in the Harwich Port, or offer a range of programming about various presentations and guided walks, not only within Harwich but across the Cape. As an example of an event of regional importance, most recently in March, Channels 18 and 99 provided their viewers with timely advanced previews of the 10th Annual Meet Your Local Farmers, an event sponsored by both Harwich Conservation Trust and the regional Cape and Islands Farm Bureau, free and open to the public. This event featured up to 48 different local farming exhibitors and farm-supporting organizations that shared their farm histories, agricultural products, and farming techniques with more than 1,000 visitors in a three-hour period. So thanks to local cable access, the public learned about the signature spring event, connected with farmers across the Cape, supported local businesses, and became more aware of the land stewardship synergy between both land conservation and local farming. Beyond that, these community-oriented cable access stations also provide viewers with helpful, actionable information about town committee and town meeting matters. As towns continue to partner in order to address regional issues such as Harwich and Chatham, regionalizing schools, or Harwich-Dennis and Yarmouth collaborating to solve wastewater management issues, coverage and information provided by local cable access channels is critical for an informed public that can better engage in community decision-making. We look forward to continued support for local cable access stations. Thank you.
Thank you. Are you going to submit that officially to me?
Yes.
Thank you. So this would be Exhibit 9.
Carla. Hi. I'm Carla Burke. I live at 200 Bang Street, Harwich Port, and I work at the Brooks Free Library. I am a Comcast residential customer, and as a blind individual, I listen to Channel 18 for town government and community information. As an employee at the Brooks Free Library, I coordinate services and programs for patrons who are disabled. I use Channel 18 to publicize these services and programs that we offer, that our library offers, for our patrons who are disabled, particularly those who are blind or who have low vision. Thank you.
Thank you. Teri?
Mr. August, thank you very much. And residents of Harwich, my name is Teri Duenis. I'm the Executive Director of the Cape Cod Community Media Center. And by the sheer longevity, I am the dean of access on Cape Cod. I've been involved for over 30 years at the Cape Cod Community Media Center. And before that, I was, I worked for the cable company, and I was with Cape 11 News for seven years. And we were just saying, can we get, can you find on that Cape 11 News stuff some video of my daughter? What year? 1994? So we're going to find it. We're going to find it. I'm going to go through a little presentation of what the Cape Cod Community Media Center has done, but when I do my presentation, I really include all our Channel 18, Channel 22, our educational channel, and really kind of put all the umbrella of public access into one. And we unfortunately, I got to point it that way, don't I? I want to show you a little bit about what our mission is at the media center. It is to build community through media and enhance democratic communication and facilitate free expression by providing our towns with a state-of-the-art media resource center. And you can see by some of our members who stood up today, free speech and democracy is alive and well at the media center. Our vision is that we foster open access to information and communications technology for the distribution of free ideas, community development, and personal empowerment. Kind of in a nutshell, that's really what we do. I'm going to kind of blow through this rather quickly because I don't want to bore you, but we've been in operation since 1990, and the present, we've been dealing with this last year, and we know that the future is going to be in our next license agreement. I've been involved in three of these, so that's been over 30 years of involvement in cable issues. 2020 to 2030, it's hard to imagine 2030, but this is what we're looking at in the fu, for the future. Historically, 29 years of providing public access programming, we've produced over 25,000 programs, 3,000 hours of original programming per year. We averaged about 2,500 individual equipment checkouts. And we serve, I need to mention that, we serve the towns of Barnstable, Yarmouth, Dennis, Chatham, and Harwich. And those five towns in the mid-Cape is really where we provide our impact primarily. Over 60,000 hours of usage of this equipment that we make available to our members who pay $30 a year to join, to be a member. That's the cost that they pay for their membership, and they get the tools, training, and transmission. I'll mention that. Over 10,000 visitors have signed into our facility in Dennisport, which we've been at for five years now. And innovation in the field of community communications is really what we're all about. We feel we're leaders in community communications, not only in, on the Cape, but statewide and nationally also. We demonstrate that by our programmatic activities, our technology implementation, our production methods, and hopefully the overall excellence of our operation. We're a welcoming center, and we hope that folks will use our resources efficiently. We are actively engaged in promoting free speech and creative expression, and you can see that by the unique programming that some of our folks have talked about, that this is really where, what it comes down to. We are dedicated to a collaborative spirit. We certainly, not only with individuals, but we collaboratively work with the hundreds and hundreds of nonprofits on the Cape, and we realize what an impact that is on the Cape. We're actively involved in the betterment of not only the entire region, but on a hyper-local level also. We're committed to this excellence by the proper implementation of technology and production I've kind of listed some things here that just, that we offer, eight digital nonlinear editing facilities that folks can come in and use and reserve and work on their programs, a multi-set production studio way. We do live cable and live streaming capabilities in that, and have a 32-track digital audio recording studio. The wide ranges of programming are amazing, and to be able to use and implement those are terrific. And again, a little more of the content that we have that producers can check out and take into the field or produce studio content. Our classes and workshops are rather extensive. This is a list of some of them, but they can be as small and unique and different as iPhone, iPhone usage. I failed to introduce my staff, which I should stop very quickly and do. Kate McMahon is our Director of Outreach. Isabel Kaplan is our Membership Coordinator. And our news director for Cape Media News that I'm going to talk about, Sarah Colvin, is here and is going to do a little, the second part of this production. And we appreciate what they do very much, and they're very involved with all the members. And Kate and Izzy did the iPhone workshop, whatever the heck that was, how we use iPhones. The value of community services. We know that in your cable bill, you pay the access fee. It's listed on your bill, so every subscriber pays that through, and that's a pass-through that comes through to the license. So public access, Channel 18, Channel 99, Channel 98, they're not paid by a tax. They're not paid by your taxes. They're paid by your pass-through dollars on your cable bill. And we've listed the services that we have. Now, this is, this is one year, this is probably 2017. Training and instructional services, we had 7,852 hours, averaging at $50 an hour, was $392,600 in just training services. We broke, we break down everything we offer at the media center. And as you can see, there we go, the total value of services returned to the community, this was in probably 2017, as I say, but it's averaged about $3 million, this was almost $4 million in services if we were to charge a regular rate for these services that people get. And in the region, over $30 million in the life of the 10-year license. $30 million in services were returned to our community. This is the one thing that we can finally, we can get back and use, and it makes our community vibrant. Some of the nonprofits that we've worked with in the past, of course, we've done 15 years of the Cape Cod Community, Cape Cod Telethon, which is the Housing Assistance Noah Shelter Telethon. Dancing with the Docs, Cape Wellness Collaborative is a new organization. We have done a couple of years of Dancing with the Docs, similar to Dancing with the Stars, and with doctors, and they raised, this last year, they raised over $100,000 for cancer, for cancer and the Cape Wellness Collaborative work that they do. The Cape Symphony, we work with the Cape Symphony and go out and shoot the Cape Symphony with as many as eight cameras on some of the symphonies, and this is streamed back to... And this is streamed back to nursing homes and alternate living programs. And so they can, they can't get out, they can, we bring in the symphony for them. And we're in partnership with Jong Ho Pak on that one. Cape League Baseball, you're all very familiar with the Cape League Baseball and the Harwich Mariners. We deal with five of the franchises in our area. And we stream their games, we shoot a lot of their games, we do promotion for them, and do a number of things. Profile is a program that we produce. Books in the world, the longest-running cable access program in the country. And Cape Media News, Sarah Colvin. This is probably our most relevant and maybe the most important initiative that we've done. The Cape Media News takes news that you give, it gives you the more in-depth look at the news, hyper-local news. And Sarah's gonna explain a little bit why that's critically important for what we're doing. Hey, there's your video.
And just, just for the, just for the record, are you gonna finish up? And then I wanna have your materials be Exhibit Ten. And then if there's additional materials, and I will need those in some kind of hard copy form or electronically, we'll have to include those in the record.
I'll be glad to give it to you on hard copy and do the whole thing. We'll send that in, Mr. Clark.
And you are at about your five-minute mark, that's why I make the comment.
I thought, I swear that was five minutes. No.
Maybe a little over.
We will, we appreciate that one. And Sarah will, again, Sarah will go in two minutes. No, I'm just kidding.
I just wanna make sure that there are folks here. I noticed a couple of people leaving, and we're getting a little bit long. I wanna make sure we get the testimony in, that people wanna make, have their testimony in.
And I'm available for questions too afterwards and do the whole thing.
Excellent. Teri, would you send me a hard copy?
I will, absolutely.
Thank you very much. For the record, I'm Sarah Colvin, News Director for the Cape Cod Community Media Center. I currently live in Hyannis, but I grew up right here in Harwich, on Pleasant Lake Avenue, and then later on Steppen Cell Road. Lovely town. So Cape Media News, as Teri mentioned, is our local television news broadcast. We cover the five towns that we represent, Barnstable, Yarmouth, Dennis, Harwich, and Chatham. Several years ago, we attended a national conference of the Alliance for Community Media where John Nichols spoke and said, "Community media is the answer to real, connected, important news coverage. Local community access media has the power to tell the stories unlike any other organization that's cut off there." And so as we're seeing here on the Cape and really nationwide, our local community access centers are stepping up to fill the void left by local news organizations. Our newspapers are losing writers and reporters. Our television stations are based in Boston. We don't have local TV news here on the Cape. And so as I said, like, like our colleagues in, in other access centers, we made the initiative, thank you, Teri. I served on the Board of Directors of the media center for a long time and helped kind of craft the plan that brought this into place. And we started Cape Media News in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, sorry. I don't think my video's going to play. So we are here to cover local issues that matter. So the issues that really resonate with Cape Codders. We try to make our constituents and our voters as educated as possible and our citizens as well, as educated as they can be on the issues. We talk about housing, environment, economic development, schools and education, substance abuse, public safety, quality of life. And these are really the issues that drive the content that's on our weekly program. Again, for just a brief timeline, we launched in April twenty seventeen. We just celebrated our second birthday. Since then, we've covered more than a hundred and sixty-eight local stories. That's probably one seventy-eight now, since I made this PowerPoint a few weeks ago. Produced fifty thirty-minute episodes. Hired one full-time staffer in January twenty eighteen. We won a Mass Access Award for our series we did with Barnstable Police called Community Impact, in which my producer, Tom Milkie, rode along with an officer and really asked some, some serious questions and had a nice frank discussion with our police officers to truly find out what it's like for them out in the streets and what the issues that they are facing, how that impacts them and the work that they do. We grew our online audience to over two thousand. And our online audience is a really important component of what we do. While we do have a large population of folks here on the Cape who do still enjoy cable television and watch our public access channels, many of our young people don't. People are cutting the cord all over the place. And as much as our television station really is our anchor, it's important to us to connect with our online audience to be able to show them what we're doing and hopefully bring them into the media center, encourage them to use their, their public access center. So we have a Facebook page, over two thousand followers right now. And our videos regularly get hundreds of views, which is really nice. The latest thing we created is a pop-up newsroom concept, in which it's kind of like a studio in a box. And I will bring my live streaming equipment with me to local events and happenings and do live broadcasts all day. And it's more fun for me because I came through radio. I did live radio for a very long time before I came into TV. I did live television. I worked for Town of Barnstable's Channel Eighteen for five years, doing a live daily program for them. So the, the aspect of going live is something that's always been exciting to me. And we've got some great feedback from the community from that live broadcast as well. Again, local stories that matter, all of those things that I talked about. And we are a team of two. So we produce a weekly half-hour segment covering at least five stories a week. And that includes sourcing the story, making the, making the appointments, going out and getting the footage, filming, doing the interviews, coming back, cutting it, hosting the show, doing all of those things. So assignment editor, field producer, myself, and Gabby Rossin, who's been an enormous help, and Tom Milkie, who does stories from time to time. But we're really hoping to grow this in the coming years. So we've, I've been really pleased to see the success that Cape Media News has had and really the reaction that the public has had, saying, wow, I didn't know we had TV news for Cape Cod. So, you know, hopefully we'll be able to continue in our contract with Comcast that will allow us to flourish and bring television news to Cape Cod. I don't know if this is gonna play. It's not. So that's all I have to say. So thank you very much.
Excellent, thank you. And just for the record, if you could submit that again in paper form, so we'll include it as Exhibit Eleven, the media piece of it, the news media piece of it, presentation. Thank you. Ginny?
Good afternoon. I'm Virginia Hewitt. I'm the Library Director at Brook Street Library, and I'm also a resident at seven eighty-seven Main Street. I know some of our staff members have already spoken, and so I won't go over, make the same points. But you can see with three of us here, how much we rely on Channel Eighteen. And we appreciate Cape Cod Media Center as well to get word out to the public on the services and programs available at the library. And I, but I also wanted, so I wanted to talk more about what, how the community benefits. Those local sources of information, like Sarah said, are so important, along with, we do have an excellent local newspaper bill, the Cape Cod Chronicle. And, but those local sources of information with, you know, talking about what's happening in town and, and the different events and issues, that's what creates connections between people and, and helps people feel connected to the community. And that's so important. That's what makes a community and not just a town. And, and without that, we, we wouldn't have this. And I just think it's so, so valuable. Community Journal on our own Channel Eighteen is a great source of more social information and some government about what's happening with different departments or proposals by the town. And then the Board of Selectmen's Meetings, the Board of Health, the Planning Department, the Conservation Board, the Finance Committee, Vote to Information, all of those boards and committees that are on there are just excellent sources of information for the public. And I know, I watch it almost every night. Sometimes I say meeting more than once. I don't know, glutton for, I'm, I'm into government anyway. But I always learn a lot about different parts of government that I don't, that I'm not involved in. And I know the community does too, because they come in and ask us about it. And so I use that a lot. Our reference librarian does not live in town, so she doesn't see, you know, the Board of Selectmen, you know, live broadcasts, for example. So I'm able to say in the morning, Jennifer, watch this, starting at like forty-five minutes. So, so we use it, so we are better prepared. We have more information, and we're better prepared to understand an issue or proposal so that we can answer the public's questions when they come in. And that, that's really important. And, and they do come in because it's very popular, and they do watch it. So we know, we know that they watch it. So it's just invaluable to us to help us do our jobs. And, and I wanted to mention one other thing that hasn't been talked about. And that is, without Comcast's funding for Channel Eighteen, we could not support that level of service, that high quality and the extensive offerings that they have. And so I, that's just so important. I just know budget-wise that that probably wouldn't be possible. And so I hope that Comcast, you know, that we continue that, maybe increase that level of support. Say that. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you, Ginny. Carolyn?
Carolyn Carey, the Community Center Director, as well as the Cultural Center Director. I also am a resident of the Town of Harwich. I feel, thank you for the opportunity. I feel like I should say ditto to a lot of it, and I won't take up a lot of your time. But as the person who represents the building that hosts two hundred groups and organizations at the community center, and their message being able to get out to the rest of the community, and thanks to Channel Eighteen, definitely Jamie, Caleb, and the people on the shows that you've heard. Sometimes I even try and steal their chair and be the, the host, but it's not working out well. In addition, the Cultural Center, which is a new venue for the Town of Harwich, but has taken on so, so many new roles for people in this community, so much so that it is mentioned all over the state right now as we're entering Art Week. Last year, I stood up and said, oh, my God, the Zachem Bridge, the Prudential Center, and the Harwich Cultural Center are on the front page. And that is truly due to people like Jamie, who took the photos for us and helped us out. We're having artists featured each and every week. We can continue to grow. What I really wanted to say is the development and growth is unlimited. They are always willing to help us get the word out and make sure that people are aware of the programming that we're doing and also of what we're not doing, that the public is looking to do. Just this morning at five fourteen AM, we were on Channel Five News for exactly one minute. And I thought, wow. I know how long it took me to get that to that point. I don't, I can't imagine how much it would cost if we had to publicize our events and pay for that. But for those of you who missed it, I've already contacted with Jamie, because you shouldn't have been up at five fourteen AM. And those are the things that we get to do, have people see what they're missing. And I will say that I do know people are watching it because as I shop in the local grocery stores each and every week, somebody says, oh, and you're on Channel Eighteen? And can you tell me what's happening here? So I thank you. And I also want to just point out that you never know what's coming from our cable channels. Those of you who don't remember, Seth Doan got his start at Channel Eighteen. So please know, you are doing much more than just getting information. You're launching careers, building community, and developing long-lasting friendships. Thanks.
Carolyn, before you, before you depart.
I'm departing.
In terms of the Cultural Center, it was a building that the town acquired from Monomoy Regional School District. And you've converted over successfully. Has, are there needs in that building that have been expressed to you by the artists in terms of a technology that you may want to comment on?
We do not have enough time, but I'll go briefly over them. So yes, there are plenty of needs. As I was saying, that Jamie and Dinah, who does a lot of the interviews along with Caleb, have come over and started interviewing our artists. But the thing about the building is that it's forever growing. We have people who want to know what's happening inside there, what we're doing. So having access inside that building for people to, whether it's on a remote location or the Art Week events, all of those, we would like to promote and put on the station. Just last night, thank you for sending people over. They were overtaking video of the outside of the building, which was, is now converted into a large piano. So Cape Cod Media, thank you. Channel Eighteen has covered it. But we get calls from people who can't drive or can't go out and say, oh, thank you so much for showing that. I wouldn't have had the opportunity. So the opportunities inside that building are just growing by leaps and bounds to have people come in, do interviews, get to know what's going on inside there. We are part of Art Week, which is huge. We have just had, I think I lost count, at like fifteen straight events. So we're happy you're covering the Guild of Harwich Artists. But definitely, the more that we could do, the more access we can get in there, the more publicity we can get, the more the community will continue to grow and help the economic development of the town as well.
Excellent. Thank you for that. I'll go the gentleman and then the lady? You're going up together?
Yes.
Makes it even easier.
I'm very grateful to you for subbing for me when I can't be there.
Hi, I'm Jack Wyatt.
And I'm Eileen Wyatt.
And we co-host a weekly production on Channel Eighteen called Community Journal.
And we also live at Six Bayport Road, West Harwich.
I'd like to speak first of all of the grassroots of the show. It basically is what's going on. And at first, we thought, nobody's watching this show.
And then we started to notice when we would be in Dunkin' Donuts or Shaws or whatever, out in the community together, little ladies would be waving to us and sort of whispering to each other. And I said, "Jack, do you know them?" And they, I said, "No, do you?" And I said, "No." And then, then we started to realize as they came up to us and actually tapped us on the shoulder or tapped us on the arm and said, "Thank you so much for telling us what's going on around town." We would never know if we didn't have Channel Eighteen coming into our homes and telling us what the events are going to be, what the meetings are going to be, the organizational things that are going on. And they even comment on the interviews that are done by Dinah as well as ourselves, either live or recorded. And they comment on what we talked about. And when we used to go to the Harwich University Theater and, and show clips of the plays that the children were putting on, and our children had grown up in the theater with Seth Doan, by the way.
Yes.
And anyway, they commented on the children and how wonderful it was to see them. So it just, it is just under the direction of Jamie and Caleb, a wonderful way of getting information out to the people of the community that might not otherwise have access to it.
Yeah, it was mentioned very early in the meeting that our town is, more than half the town, is what you might call advanced age.
Older.
Older, including us.
Yes.
But it's a great opportunity for them to know what's going on. And so we don't ever want it to stop. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I'm gonna do a show of hands before I go to Jamie last, because I know Jamie did a survey. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that hasn't had an opportunity to speak yet? The young lady in the second row, and then I'll turn it over to Jamie.
Great job.
I am Dinah Lane, and I'm a volunteer with Channel Eighteen. And I, my name was mentioned, so I figured I might as well say something. I have had a wonderful experience actually being a volunteer with the, with the channel. And I do a number of the interviews. And particularly, I think the Artist Spotlight is a wonderful new series, which we're, we're engaging in in order to be able to really highlight the amazing work that Carolyn and Erica and the other person, the other program, Brian, have done at the Cultural Center. Because there are so many artists, and many of them, because the place is so big and so, already so successful and buzzing, they don't even really know about each other's work. And so this is a way to highlight their work. And the wonderful thing is to be able to have the opportunity to talk about those things with those people. And I too have had so many people come up to me and say they were excited by something that they'd seen, some artists that I've spotlighted. And it's really a great opportunity, both for me and for the community, I think. And I live at Two Lakehurst Drive in Harwich. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think you're up, Jamie.
Jamie Goodwin, I'm the Harwich Channel Eighteen Station Manager. I would like to thank everybody for showing up today. I really appreciate you taking the time out of your day. When I took over the station as Station Manager six years ago, we were regularly filming two boards and committees. Today, with two full-time staff people and one part-time, we film over fifteen boards and committees out of the thirty-three regular meeting boards and committees in the Town of Harwich. We have two hearing rooms where we can film. I would like in the future to put two or three more hearing rooms online. And that would help to enable me to film every single board and committee that meets in this town. would help to enable me to film every single board and committee that meets in this town. As technology changes, so do our needs for technology. We keep a huge inventory of cameras and equipment that are constantly in need of replacement and repair. I would like to continue that growth in the next decade. This only helps to improve the transparency in government in this town. In addition to the 15 boards and committees, every year we cover over 20 annual events, parades, community barbecues. We're covering everything pretty much at the Cultural Center, emergency management programs, police and fire programs, community programs that take place at the Community Center. We also cover every wastewater committee meeting, all wastewater support hearings, because we have a huge sewer system potentially going in in the next few years. And I think it's really important to educate the public, especially the public that can't attend these hearings all the time. In addition to my research for this hearing today, we did issue a cable survey to the citizens of Harwich, and we had 155, 155 responses, which is pretty overwhelming. We did ask 10 questions, and that will be in the record for today. Thank you.
Just for the record, that would be identified, obviously the verbal comments as well as the written comments of Exhibit 12. I didn't know if you wanted to highlight, just kind of flipping through this kind of quickly, there was a few things that caught my eye, just the number of people that watch. High-definition programming was over 80%.
Correct.
And does our current station do it at high definition?
We currently not, do not broadcast in high definition. We would like.
That's not your choice.
That is not by choice. That is the only option that we are given.
The peg channel is, high definition is not provided by Comcast for the peg access channels.
And then just the other one that caught my eye, just, again, I know these are officially in the record, but just so people at home that may be watching this, overall satisfaction with cable services in Harwich, it kind of stands out that it's less than 5% that are highly satisfied. The neither satisfied or unsatisfied was the largest category at 30%, and the unsatisfied was over 25%, and highly unsatisfied was over 10%. So definitely leaning towards the needs for improvement end of the spectrum, I think, is what the survey showed.
Correct. Yep. I would also like to point out that every year we also have interns from the local high schools, and I have six regular volunteers that volunteer on a weekly basis.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much. Is there anyone else? I know I said that Jamie would be last, but in case anyone that showed up that decided at the spur of the moment wanted to say something, I was going to give people an opportunity. Going once, going twice. Okay. I will, at this time, call the hearing to a close, and the record reflect that it is 3:17. And also, just for the record, I did a head count of about 27 people in attendance. So, and I appreciate very much the time and attention. I think this is my third time doing it. I've been in this business for about 29 years. I've been in different towns, and I don't remember so many people coming out to support their cable operations. So it's greatly appreciated, the comments that were presented today. Thank you very much.